The following is a rebroadcast of the Newark City Schools Board of Education's most recent general monthly meeting.
I'd like to call this meeting to our Newark City School Board of Education. It is Monday, February 11th, 2013. We're meeting in the brand-new high school media center, and I apologize for the delay. The board has decided to prove to the students that we can use the technology also, and we're going to paper as board members, board meetings. And we experimented somewhat at our January meeting, and we're doing it live tonight on TV, so we've had a couple of technical glitches getting started, but I think we're ready to go now. Jeff, call the roll, please.
Mr. Blind?
Here.
Mr. Bybee?
Here.
Mr. Carr?
Here.
Mr. Harden?
Here.
Mrs. Nickam?
Here.
We have a quorum of five.
And now Dan Bybee will lead us in the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Beth. We have her flag over here to the left, your right. You know, before we get into the pledge, I just want to draw our attention to the fact that, you know, we have a pretty good school system here, and I think that that's evidenced by the support that we get from our community. And as I was looking through the agenda before the meeting started, I noticed that the gifts and donations that we have to recognize this month are particularly compelling. Tens of thousands of dollars that have been donated to the school district, and I think to a large part because of the possible momentum that we see going forward. As I said before, and you've heard me say this, these companies and these institutions have a lot of different things they can do with their money. So this is a pretty good vote of confidence that they think enough of our school system, our district, our administration, students, and teachers to give us these donations. So I hope you'll join me in doing the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dan. Now we have a technology update. Marcy Weimer from the high school.
Good evening. I don't have anything fancy tonight or anything like this. We've been quite busy, so I just want to give you an update what we've been doing for the last month, month and a half. Many teachers came to us, and they were a little overwhelmed with everything that we were throwing at them. And so Alex and myself have started creating little cheat sheets. This one, for example, is over CMS, the online classroom management system that we're using right now. And with these cheat sheets, teachers just go and flip through, so it's kind of like a short guide for them. We've also created one for iMovie. We're creating one for PowerPoint, and our goal is to have these for all the applications that the kids will be using, because we have to keep in mind, even though we might be a little bit tech savvy, not every student's tech savvy, so when we go into classrooms, we can provide these for the students as easy flip charts for them. That's one thing we've been working on. The second thing we've been working on is another classroom management system is Moodle. Jamison granted Alex and I access to Moodle, in which that is an online classroom. This also right here is an online classroom, but anyone can see anything that we put, test, everything like that. It's not secure. Where Moodle is a secure website, so teachers then can start putting tests online. And I'm sure you're used to the terms blended learning and the flip classroom, so Moodle will become an important part of that. Alex and I have created a Moodle course over the flip classroom to give teachers ideas and thoughts about how to flip a classroom, but also will teach them how the Moodle system works. We're also making sure that every student that is using technology has an AUP signed to make sure they're legal to be on the Internet and everything like that. That has been a huge job. Also, many teachers are using MacBooks in math. The math teachers are having them use the MacBooks to learn concepts and practice concepts. An English-language art teacher created an iBook for his student, students over poetry, so he's had them checked out for two weeks, and they've done the whole unit all through an iBook, which will provide you next month the sample of the iBook. And in science, Stein and Carlson check out MacBooks and iPads quite a bit because they're integrating that technology in with their students. With Jay opening up, we've been busy with teachers helping them set up their printers, learning how to use their interactive pens to make their boards like a smartboard, so they're not just stuck behind their computer with a PowerPoint. It's also with the interactive pens. Many teachers had no clue how they worked. With the interactive pens, it gets the students more involved in the classroom, so they're going up to the board and writing and solving problems or circling and diagramming. Also, last week, we just wrapped up our last Apple training. That was provided, and that was over challenged-based learning. Many teachers liked the concept, but they also gained a lot of new ideas of how to incorporate the iPads and MacBooks into their classrooms. And then, because I'm kind of unprepared, I've left the house this morning at 6:00 to go over to E-TEC. I've been there all day, just came back. E-TEC is a technology conference that's provided for the state of Ohio. It's today, tomorrow, and Wednesday, and what this conference is focusing on is blended learning and flip classroom. Alex and I just today have gained a tremendous amount of knowledge and ideas to bring back to help the staff and the students to integrate this technology.
I've got a question. At one time, there was a, I don't know if concern's a good word, but I'll say it, a concern about server capacity. Has that issue been addressed, or is it still kind of looming out there?
Right now, we're okay.
Okay.
You would have to ask Jamison. You know, if we bring more and more computers on, I don't know about server capacity. That would be a Jamison question.
It is something that we continue to address. That's an ongoing conversation.
Okay.
With our staff. And actually, Angie McCutcheon would have been here tonight, but she is at the tech conference in Columbus, so I asked her to come next month, and she would be, she's the one, the new person to replace Sandra. She'll be here next month to meet the board and stuff, so.
I've had several parents ask questions, you know, when will we get to where my kid can bring their own device? When will my kid's class be using some of these iPads you've already bought? Do we have any time schedule in mind of where we're headed with things, or are we still sort of in the feeling-out stage here?
I just talked to Angie today, and I think she wants to meet as a team to discuss bring your own device. Tended many sessions today about bring your own device. I don't know. Hopefully, sometime soon. They've given us a lot of ideas of do's and don'ts and everything. Like today, I thought was really neat. I went to one session, and through the University of Kentucky, it's a free program. It's your digital driver's license. And a kid takes that course. It's free. Kid takes that course to learn about using the technology in the classrooms, the do's, the don'ts, all this stuff, and they earn a license with their AUP signed and everything. And then that allows them to bring their own device. I thought that was a neat idea.
We also want to make sure, because we have a lot of discussions about that, we want to make sure that when we allow students to do that, that our network will hold up. And with Angie just being here for a month, you know, that's what we're getting our hands around, because I've instructed, I don't want to do that yesterday, and so we're moving forward, but we don't want to trip once we do it either. And, you know, Marcy's correct, I've seen that license program too, that you can, it's like students can lose their license for speeding in a car, they can also lose their license for items to bring your own device, and that's a good program.
Anything else? Thank you, Marcy. Now move on to communications from the floor. Anyone wishing to address the board can approach the podium. Please give your name and address, and you may address the board for up to five minutes. Does anyone wish to address the board this evening? No one wishes to address the board? We'll move on to treasurer's recommendations. Jeff?
Item 2A is approval of the board meeting minutes for the regular meeting work session on January 12th, 2013. Item 2B is approval of January 2013 financial statements and payments to vendors. We earned interest in an amount of $4,116.10, and our fund balances is general fund is 14.6 million, bond retirement is 1.5 million, permanent improvement is 2.2 million, building fund is 3.7 million, food service is 800,000. Ohio School Facilities Local is 100,000 left in it. High School Facilities Project State Share is 3 million. Classroom Facilities is 1.9 million, another miscellaneous is 3.2 million, for a total in the bank of 28.8 million dollars. Items 2C is the approval of adjustments to our permanent supplemental appropriations. I gave each board member a copy of that. Fund 019 has an adjustment of $5,602. Fund 300, District Managed Activity, has an adjustment of 6,243. Title 2D, it was a reduction of 2,1450. And Title 2, Title 1 is 27,466.79, and Title 2A is 7,346.26. Each of those has an explanation on the bottom of your sheet for each board member. Some of them is the Wilson Athletic Fund Revision, some of them's linkage to garden projects. The title project is through the state. The 019 is the John Garlinger Haslett Fund Scholarship for Boys Basketball. So with that, I would entertain questions or a motion to approve, please.
Do you have a motion?
Second.
Tim motion? Bybee, second.
Kurt, Kurt moved.
Kurt moved, okay, I'm sorry.
Dan, second. Motion to approve treasurer's recommendations 2A through C. Any discussion or questions for Jeff? C, none? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Bybee?
Yes.
Mr. Blind?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mrs. Nickam?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. And I would entertain a motion to go to executive session for personnel to discuss the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of public employees. Do you have a motion to move to executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Kurt is moved. Tom is second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Blind?
Yes.
Mr. Bybee?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mrs. Nickam?
Yes.
We'll move to executive session. It is now 6:50.
Okay, under Personnel, we have the retirements and resignations. I do want to point out three retirements. Kim Sorino, effective June 30th, 2013, high school principal. Kenneth Armentraut, who will retire March 31st, is a custodian and a stalker. And also Bonnie Bodkins, custodian Level 2 on January 31st, which she already has retired. We certainly appreciate the effort. Oh, we also have one more supplemental contract on resignation from Nikki Pyle at Ben Franklin Talent Show, but we do appreciate the efforts of these people. Item 2, leaves of absence, which we do not have any leaves of absence. Item 3, appointments and assignments. We have two people. We have a student helper and Forrest Huff, a food truck driver. Computer to catch up here. Supplemental contracts, basically what we have are fall coaches, some spring, and some assistant athletic directors for the middle school coordinators. Under Item 5, salary and position adjustments. We have four salary adjustments to make. There are no tutors under six, and then we'll stop at Item 7 tonight, which are approval of substitutes. So I recommend Item 137.
Do you have a motion to approve superintendent's recommendations 3A, 137?
So moved.
Second.
Tom is moved. Tim is second. Any discussion or questions? If not, call the roll, please, Jeff.
Mr. Blind?
Yes.
Mr. Bybee?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mrs. Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mrs. Nickam?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 8, approval of public notices. And this is just the approval to advertise the reemployment of retired personnel, which we're required to do on a 60-day public notice. Number one, we'll do, I'll do these all separate. It's recommended the Board of Education approve running a public notice for the purpose of advertising a public hearing to receive input on the issue of rehiring Martha Harmon, who previously was employed by the Newark City School District in the same position, Principal McGuffey Elementary.
Do you have a motion to approve running a public notice for the intention of rehiring Martha Harmon?
So moved.
Second.
Dan has moved. Tom is second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bybee?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mrs. Nickam?
Yes.
Mr. Blind?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, under Item 2, we have the same thing. I won't read all of it, but it's the same issue, the rehiring of Amy Norman, who previously was employed in the district in the same position, technology integration teacher here at the high school.
Do you have a motion to approve the public advertising of the rehire of Amy Norman?
So moved.
Dan has moved. Kurt is second. Any discussion? Not call the roll, please.
Mr. Bybee?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mrs. Nickam?
Yes.
Mr. Blind?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 3, 83, it's recommended the Board of Education approve the running of public notice for Judith McNish, who is in an auxiliary position employed by our district, the Newark City Schools for Newark Catholic.
Do you have a motion to approve the running of a public notice for the rehiring of Judith McNish?
So moved.
Second.
Kurt is moved. Tim is second. Any discussion? Not call the roll, please.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mrs. Nickam?
Yes.
Mr. Blind?
Yes.
Mr. Bybee?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mrs. Nickam?
Yes.
Motion carries.
It's recommended by the Board of Education approve running a public notice for Barbara Bell in the same position.
Do you have a motion to approve the advertising of public notice for the rehire of Barbara Bell?
So moved.
Second.
Kurt is moved. Tom is second. Any discussion? Not call the roll, please, Jeff.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Blind?
Yes.
Mr. Bybee?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mrs. Nickam?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item B, we're going to ask to be removed until further timing, further time next month, so we won't act on Item 8B. Item B, students in curriculum. Item 2, special education contracts with the Columbus City Schools, East Knox Local and North Union Local School District. Also, under 2, Item 6, public announcement regarding Title 6B funds. It's recommended the following announcement be made. The Newark City Schools Special Education Department will soon be applying for Title 6B grant monies for the 2013-2014 school year. These are federal funds used to support education of students with disabilities attending the Newark City Schools. Each of the district collects input from parents, students, staff, and community members regarding the expenditures of these monies. If you have any ideas regarding the use of these funds, please send comments or requests either Jean Brown or Linda Price via electronic mail, and you can find their email addresses online, or jmbrown@laca.org, or lprice@laca.org, or in written form to Newark City Schools, 85 East Main Street, Newark, Ohio, 43055.
Do you have a motion to approve superintendent's recommendations B 1 through 6?
So moved.
Second.
Dan has moved. Kurt is second. Any discussion? If not, call the roll, please, Jeff.
Mr. Bybee?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mrs. Nickam?
Yes.
Mr. Blind?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And Item C, gifts. One, gifts, a monetary donation from the Energy Cooperative to Newark High School, School Within a School Service Learning, Mike McNichol, $1,835. Monetary donation from Lowe's Charitable Education Foundation for Newark High School Toolbox for Education with Mike McNichol, $3,670. Monetary donation from the Licking County Foundation for the 8th Grade Washington DC Trip, $18,898.16. This is the fund that was set up this year so community members could donate to that trip, and we appreciate the $18,000 that our community sent in, so thank you very much. Also, with gifts, donation from Park National Bank Corporation for $1,000 to the 8th Grade Washington DC Trip. Monetary donation for the C-Tag Program from State Farm Mutual Automobile Insurance Company, $10,000, and I believe that's, this is year three of that donation.
Yes.
Which is simply outstanding. That's awesome. Monetary donation to Carson Elementary Field Trip to Columbus Symphony with Ann Robinson, a music teacher at Carson Elementary. Target Field Trip Grants Program, $700. Clothing and Tory donation to McGuffey Elementary from Chris and Dan Wilkins, $1,016.59. I would mention before the board approved this, I totally agree with Mr. Bybee. This is an awesome list of donors, and we so much appreciate it, because I agree, there's a lot of people that are knocking on doors of individuals and businesses here in the district, and we will take that as a compliment, Dan, that we're spending their money wisely, and it's going into our youth and giving them opportunities that they wouldn't have without this. So thank you to all who have given gifts.
Do you have a motion to approve superintendent's recommendations C, the acceptance of gifts?
So moved.
Second.
Kurt is moved. Tom is second. Any discussion? Just we accept these gifts with much appreciation. Thank you. Call the roll, please, Jeff.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Blind?
Yes.
Mr. Bybee?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mrs. Nickam?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under D, business. Item 3, acceptance of bids. It's recommended the Board of Education accept the bids for the project titled NHS 701 Door Replacement Package, awarding of bids. Recommend the Board of Education award the bids for the project, Door Replacement Package, to Good Home Maintenance, a base bid of $76,978, and the alternate of $7,387, for a total of $134,365.
Do you have a motion to approve superintendent's recommendations D 1 through 5?
Yes. Motion.
Tim has moved. Tom is second. Any discussion? What buildings for this high school door package?
Primarily K Building, the auditorium, some scattered here and there, even in A and B. It was some stuff, I think, that the architects discovered later that, eh, it really would be better to replace these doors rather than keep the old ones, so they picked together a final package to go ahead and replace them, and that's why Tom came in late. With the next window of opportunity, then, it'll probably be in the area of spring break or the late, very end of the year, and take the old doors off next year.
Okay. Any other questions? Not call the roll, please.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Blind?
Yes.
Mr. Bybee?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mrs. Nickam?
Yes.
Motion carries. Now for Board Recommendations. It's recommended the Board of Education announce its intent to adopt the following policies as shown in the appendix, and announcement be made that these policies will be available to the board, staff, and public for inspection in the Office of the Superintendent of Schools from February 12th, 2013 through March 8th, 2013. File 1520, Employment of Administrators. File 8800, Religious and Patriotic Ceremonies and Observances. And now we'll move on to board discussion. We can start. Donnie, you're in, Tim.
It is a good time to be a New York Wildcat. Things are going well. Athletics, academics, two schools of promise in Newark. That's exciting stuff, and just continuing to build momentum, that's very encouraging.
All right.
Pass.
Tom?
I did want to mention, I think this is our first meeting on TV since the shootings in Connecticut back in December, and I do want people to know the administration's discussing possible changes, tweakings of a policy. There's been trainings, the board has been discussing it. We do welcome anybody's input, anybody's concerns and thoughts as we try to move forward into determining what is the best thing to do for the safety of our students and staff. On a lighter note, all our winter sports teams are starting their tournaments here soon, so get out and support the Wildcats.
Tom, you're right. It's a great time of year. It really is. There's a lot of exciting things going on, both in the classroom and outside the classroom, and I just like to, I just like to reflect and look at the spectrum of the school system itself. When we look at the elementary schools, how positive and the kind of results that we're getting at the elementary level, and then the middle schools, you know, how important, how strong that foundationally our students get that support before they even get to high school. And so when they get to high school, you know, it prepares them better to be successful. You know, our graduation rate committee, they do a fantastic job, and if you ever have some time, and I know how busy everybody is during the week, but if you ever have a time to go to that meeting and see all the positive input that's given in that graduation rate committee meetings, those are outstanding. So again, it makes me feel good, because I see, I see this positive momentum continue to be reinforced and continue to be recycled, and it makes me think that we're heading in the right direction.
Thank you, Dan. Jeff?
Just thankful to be in Newark City Schools. Thankful to be one of the team leaders here at Newark City Schools. I'd like to thank the board for letting me serve this four-year, coming up on my four-year anniversary, and I'm glad to serve the students and the taxpayers in Newark City Schools. And I hope I can spend another 10 years here to retire.
I'd like to mention, Martha's here, McGuffey Elementary School. Next month, they'll be getting recognized by the Central Ohio House School Board Group, and Martha's taking some staff members there. I believe Mr. Bybee's attending that night. I'll be there, and so I want to congratulate Martha and the staff and students at McGuffey Elementary. Friday, I had a great pleasure of going over to Legend and unveiling to the staff at Legend that they also, or for last school year, became a school of promise. And it's real exciting, because a lot of those staff members were at North Elementary the last year that that was in, and they were a school of promise there, but because they moved schools, they didn't get recognized. So to see the excitement in that staff's face and that, so congratulations to Mrs. Cooper and her staff and students at Legend for that. Tomorrow morning, I get a pleasure of going into the ROTC room for a couple hours and help them with a program, and I thought it'd be nice to mention, well, I remember my first year here, their first year of the program, they had 70-some students. There are well over 170 students right now, and I'm so proud of those kids and staff members and that, and many of you see them have basketball games and presenting a flag and that, and they've just really, really achieved a lot with that. So that's an example of you come in and you offer kids something quality, and they take advantage of it. And so that's nice to see. I really enjoy that. Last thing I would mention is that when you talk about some community pride, you attend our sporting events, and I'll tell you, because I go to a lot of sporting events, no one travels and supports kids like the Newark community does, and we continually have more fans. It's sad to see sometimes school come down here with 2,500 kids in the school, and they have 60 people sitting across the way. And so Martha has a phone call. Yeah, so, but in Newark, our community supports our kids, and so we're thankful for that. And this school year's going wonderful. We're all ready, we're, you know, we're, heck, we're almost into winter already. And haven't even had snow day, so the year's flying by, and I can tell you that all 11 of our buildings are really working hard with the students and student achievement, and giving our students a quality education, and I'm really proud of that. So thank you, Martha, and all your peers that do that, and the ladies and gentlemen sitting here in the first couple rows out there. And the ladies and gentlemen sitting here in the first couple rows out there, well, we have staff members behind, I don't wanna leave anybody, and the third row back there too. We've got a great group of people here and I continue to grow professionally every day and every month in Newark, and I really appreciate that. So, thank you.
I've just received a memo that we would like to congratulate Seth Roy, our Communications Coordinator, on the birth of his daughter. Congratulations Seth and Abby and big sister, Annalee.
Yeah, congratulations.
Tom touched on safety a little bit. Just to give you an update, at the organizational meeting, the board asked Mr. Ute to set up a safety committee comprised of board members, staff members, and community members. That group will be meeting for the first time here the last week of February. So, we'll get going on that and kinda reviewing what the law allows and what other school districts are doing and what we already do and how we want to move forward as far as safety is concerned. We, tonight, many monetary gifts. It's every board meeting, we talk about that. Dan and Doug have both touched on it. I wanted to also touch on the fact that in addition to the many monetary donations, the hours upon hours of volunteer time that is put in to Newark City Schools every week in every building, companies that sponsor tutors in different buildings, Denison University that has reading tutors, and there's just so many community organizations and individuals that volunteer every week. I actually volunteer twice a month at Carson through my employer, State Farm. And I'm tutoring 4th graders in math, which is kinda funny because I don't know if, a lot of the parents out there, if you have a 4th grader, you'll know the new math that they teach in elementary. It's a little confusing. The lattice method, I don't know if you've heard of that? When my sophomore was in elementary, I never caught on to the lattice. And I'm supposed to be tutoring and helping 4th graders at Carson with lattice, and it was a little difficult. But one of the 4th graders, Gavin, in Mr. L's class, taught me the lattice method this past week, and I was very excited that it finally clicked. And you know, it's actually honestly really easier than what we learned when I was a kid. It just took me about six years to figure it out. But, so, you know, the tutors are helping the kids, but the kids are helping the tutors. And so, it's a very rewarding time working with Mr. L's class at Carson Elementary. I have a good time.
Jeff uses lattice method.
Yeah, Jeff uses the lattice method to do the book.
I was thinking we could start around the new TV show. He's smarter than the 4th grader.
Exactly, we should. But we talked all, but there's a lot of sports activities coming up. March is a big fine arts time, actually. We've got a lot of Ohio Music Education Association solo and ensemble contests that'll be happening for our different fine art students. So, there's a lot, there are some local contests and then some district contests, so lots to see there also. And so, please get out, see our sports teams, see our fine arts. There's a lot of very talented kids in our district and they really enjoy it when they have a big crowd come out for them. And I think that's all I have. So, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session again for the purpose of personnel, for the, to discuss the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of public employees. And we do not intend to have business after this executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Dan has moved Tim is second. Any discussion? If not, we just do ayes or do I need to?
Say aye.
Those in favor, ayes?
Aye.
Those opposed, nays? Ayes have it, we adjourn the executive session. It is, wow, 7:50.